This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for coming in today and dialing in online. I first need to open up with
Can you see me?
Yes, yes, sir. We hear you.
Hear me and see me, okay.
And motion to allow Supervisor Guy for special circumstances to attend today's meeting via web meeting. Motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. For those in the office, if you do have a phone, please make sure you're putting that on mute. We will go into public comments. I do just want to state that if your comment is regarding the bond validation process, the letter that goes out, you're more than welcome to make a statement. We will probably reserve our comments until the district manager's time. So just, we may not respond directly to those comments. We'll probably have a little bit of time during district manager updates to to address that issue. And again, there's that, the actual meeting for that is August 4th, just so everyone has it, it's on the record. Okay, we will start with public comments, please.
We have a few. First is Margaret Feinberg. She has two agenda items, the President's Council meeting minutes, the Gateway Boulevard medians by Stony Brook, and then a non-agenda item of driveway damage. A reminder of the five-minute timeline.
No problem. I can be short and sweet on this. Margaret Feinberg, Stony Brook, Gateway. On the minutes for the President's Council meeting, it would be nice if you added what presidents of what HOAs attended that meeting because it only shows the supervisors and what the agenda items were, but there's no way of knowing what HOAs were represented at that meeting.
We should have an attachment.
I think that-
I can have Georgia add that because she does, she checks in everybody so she knows who was there.
I think that would be nice.
Okay.
And the second thing on the agenda is the Stony Brook, the Gateway Boulevard medians down by Stony Brook. There's three options that were given to you today for that agenda item. And the three, none of the three makes sense. I think you need to go back to the drawing board. The first one is to leave everything that is there and then take out the exoras and add the peanut back. Well, you just removed the peanut because weeds grew in it because the beds weren't properly prepared before the peanut went in. So that doesn't make any sense to remove the exora, which requires very little maintenance and put the peanut back. And absolutely not on the second one, which is cementing over the medians. I just can't imagine anything more ugly and not aesthetically pleasing. That's an entrance way into Gateway. It needs to look nice. Whatever the decision is, it needs to look nice. It represents Gateway down at that end of the boulevard. So this is, that was my problem thing. I think that it's three making no changes at all, just leaving it the way it is. Does that mean you're going to leave the dirt and let weeds grow in? I wasn't quite sure what the third option was because it says not do anything.
Do nothing.
Do nothing. So just leave it with the dirt exposed and weeds to grow in. Okay. Like I said, these are not three good options. That's my opinion. And I'd like to, I know that there won't be anything that can be decided or addressed on this, but I, work was done in Stony Brook in, at the end of June, and my driveway was damaged. And I have sent a letter to the parties that were involved in that. And there's been no resolution at this point. So I would just like to make the supervisors aware of what was going on.
I need a copy of anything you handle, please.
No problem.
And who's doing the work, Margaret?
We don't know. We're working on that right now.
The invoice is here. The letter that I sent is in there. There's pictures. My email is very self-aware as to what it's placed. But I'm expecting some kind of a resolution. And I don't expect the Feinbergs to have to pay for the damage that was done.
What was the work?
Yeah, what was the work?
They were grinding the sidewalks.
Trip hazards.
We're, we're working on getting the repair done. I just don't know who's going to be doing it. It was Stony Brook, the S P A C wanted to hire people to go in and grind down the trip hazards. And they worked, they were not supposed to, on district property, they were not supposed to touch the driveways, but they ground down part of Feinberg's driveway. So we're gonna, we're gonna make it right, but I don't know who or how that's gonna happen yet.
And just FYI, my driveway is not the only one. You may not have heard from anybody else yet, but there's-
Did this group not, weren't aware that that was off limits?
That's what they told me at the end of my driveway, that they had every right to do it and they weren't told not.
And Margaret, just, what was the damage to your property? I'll read through this.
There's pictures there.
I can see on the picture it's ground.
They ground, yeah, they ground my driveway.
And she had a, yeah.
You don't repair that. I can tell you that right now.
So right, right there is where you're saying that's your damage?
It's a stamped driveway.
Yeah, it's got to be replaced. You don't repair that.
All I know is that the Feinbergs aren't going to pay for whatever damage was done.
And for the record, I really appreciate how you address yourself in third person. So, thank you. Thank you, Margaret. Who's up next?
All right. Next, we have Steve Fleming from Bristol Park. It's regarding salaries. This must be non-agenda. Salaries, the lake, lake project?
But a couple of questions. I've seen that, I got my letter, which is very upsetting to see that this time. You all are aware of the inflation going on in this country right now. I'm sure you all are aware of construction costs, concrete costs right now. And it looks like we have this list of, this wish list of all these things we want to do. I propose that we put that on hold for a couple of years until we see where our economy is going. And it's just, I don't even know what to say. Oh, and the lake project, where are we at, where are we at on the failed lake project? Because it's failed, far as I'm concerned. Does anybody know where that?
Why don't you make your statements and then we'll comment afterwards, if you don't mind.
It was twenty to twenty-five million dollar bond. We took care of several years ago, several years ago. I have seen really nothing. And the couple that I have seen done, didn't work. They failed. Magnolia Lakes, surely it's never been touched. So, and then also, I was curious.
That's not dirt.
Okay.
Magnolia Lake has been done?
Yeah.
When was it done?
About three years ago.
No, it's been since I've been here. Those last two, twenty, twenty-one, somewhere in there.
And I live right there. I've never seen them do anything in Magnolia Lakes, nothing.
Magnolia Lakes?
I think he's talking about Lake Eighty-four. Eighty-four is not in the list.
But eighty-five was.
Yeah, eighty-three was on the list.
I'm talking about the lake right off, right next to the high school.
Okay, that one was done. We had barges in there for-
Bristol Park and Magnolia Lakes.
Okay.
That wasn't done.
That one is not on the list. That's Lake Eighty-four.
Is that, is that on the list?
Eighty-three has been done. Eighty-four is on the list. It has not been done.
Eighty-four has no damage.
Where are we at on that project? Because it was-
There's a priority list that has been prepared. It's been revised and updated. And in fact, about two meetings, three meetings ago, it was presented by staff and by our engineer. And it was broken down into five or six lakes per year over the next six years, seven years.
And we have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So what, the best thing to do-
Money left for that rock?
So one, the best thing to do around, if you're interested in what the sequential order is, you can put in an information request through the district.
Customercare@gatewaydistrict.org.
And you can get the sequence of the lakes that remain.
Okay, that was, you know, that was a lot of money we approved to get that done. And really, I don't see anything. And what has been done has not worked. Cypress K Lakes is a mess.
I've got ten lakes in my community and everybody's tickle pink.
Yeah, well, your community, my community, they, you probably live on a lake, right, Mr. Tinko?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And all the lakes, all the lakes, all of the lakes have been done essentially the same way. Now, if-
How many lakes have been done? May I ask that question?
Twenty, twenty-one, something like twenty-one. We had five to be done this year. I'm sorry?
How many of them turned out okay?
To my knowledge, all of them have turned out okay.
Cypress K is a hot mess. Now, the lake down by the Seven Eleven, that turned out-
A hot mess? I don't, I don't even know what that means.
There's weeds growing all around it now.
Now, that doesn't have anything to do with the lake. That has nothing to do with the lake.
Part of the recline is falling back into the lake.
Now, that, well, see, that would be something that I would expect that would have been reported to us by our staff. I've not heard anything.
Maybe staff's not doing their job.
They have a littoral requirements on that particular pond and pavers. So a lot of people, and the littorals never looked good. So they, they had spider mites and they had that rust thing. So they, it's not weeds, it's just the, it's, it's the, the non-pretty littorals that are there, required to be there.
It just looks like the work they did on that lake particularly with the rock and everything, it's all sliding back into the lake. So why did we spend that kind of money?
I'm, I'm going to come over there and take a look at that. I'd like to say, we are having that issue in other ponds where the rock has moved. And we have identified and in fact, set aside money to go back in and put the stone back where some of the stone has settled or left.
Who pays for that bad job? We do?
Well, it wasn't a bad job. It wasn't a bad job. It met the requirements and it was good for the one-year warranty. So it wasn't a bad job.
A lot of that speaks to just the type of soil and sediment that we do have in this community. You're going to have settling, you're going to have some of those things.
We didn't know that point yet, that this might, it might be wasting that money.
You haven't convinced me yet. There's waste of money. I want to come see what you're talking about.
No, go look. You'll see. It looks pretty bad.
And what else do you have? You've got about one minute left, I think.
Salaries. Do I have a right to know what you guys make? It's curious.
Public information.
They, they make two hundred dollars a meeting, not to exceed forty, forty-eight hundred dollars.
Annual salary.
Forty-eight hundred dollars for the board.
The compensation per statute is two hundred dollars per meeting.
Not to exceed forty-eight hundred dollars for the year.
That's it.
Wait a minute. Are you talking about staff or the board? Okay.
And I believe last year we, in November, October, right, we didn't get paid for November, December, because already had exceeded it.
I might be interested in getting on this. I'm just wondering what your annual salary is for being on this board.
Well, twenty-five dollars in an application to Lee County Board of Registration, you can run for office.
Deadline is passed.
So in two years, that door will be opening up.
Anyway, my, my homeowner's insurance, again, I'm repeating myself, my homeowner's insurance went up fifteen hundred dollars. Never had a claim, fifteen hundred bucks. So right now, this wish list that we have, I, I'm not trying to disrespect, you call it a wish list, but to me, that's what it is. We're going to hire a consultant to see about buying property. Right now is the worst time in the world to be buying property. We need to wait until after the midterms and hopefully our economy gets straightened out. And the destruction costs are outrageous. Concrete is outrageous. So just so you know, thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one point today. As I asked, the twenty million dollars that was validated for the Lake Bank Restoration Project, we have not incurred debt to that amount yet. That was the maximum that we could incur. So we've only incurred, I'm not even sure what the dollar amount is, Laura, what is it that we borrowed to date?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
So just for clarification, we, it was authorized to borrow up to twenty million, but that has not been borrowed to date.
We haven't got that far yet.
That's correct. Just want to make sure that's clear for the record. We're trying to get there.
All right. Next, we have Gary Mayer from Bristol Park about the notice letter that was sent out.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I don't know if my microphone is on or not. Basically, the gentleman before me kind of covered the letter that was sent out, the notification letter. At this point, I believe is a little ludicrous in light of what the economy is flowing. It's going to get tighter. It's going to get worse a little bit. We have young families, including senior citizens like myself, that will be affected. So you're asking for money with an increase of a thousand dollars? Maybe not, maybe more. Not in this economy. I think that anything that you proposed in this letter should be tabled for at least an indefinite period of time until the economy settles down and moves forward. The gentleman again before me, I don't know if any of you have been to, relating to the letter again, been to Home Depot to look at copper wire and building material. It's outrageous at this point. To buy property anywhere in Lee County and other counties is extremely high right now. So what you're asking is to buy this and hire a consultant to find this. That is just unbelievable. The pool filter, I thought we adjusted the pool filter already. Wasn't that proposed last year to fix that pool filter?
It's ready in place.
It is?
It's installed.
It is installed. Okay, so we're in good shape with the pool filter. I believe that the, the board, and it's a tough job, should really concentrate on finishing one project at a time. Our, our lakes, I don't think there should be any lake added or subtracted to this community. We have a tough time as it is managing the water flow in these lakes. I'm sure down the road with the aging pump systems that we have, we're probably going to need new pumps. Sooner than later or later than sooner. We don't know that. But this project with all this wish list that's in here, I just had to come here today and express my feelings. This really should be tabled for an indefinite period of time due to the economy, due to base that people are struggling at this point. Not totally struggling, but understanding that we have tight budgets. To add this kind of money to any of us for twenty years down the road, I probably would never see the end of this increase along with other increases. So basically, that's, I guess for today, I'm going to wrap it up and say thank you for your tolerance with this, with this letter. And one, this letter has not been approved yet. This, all of this money is to be allocated for these projects have not been approved yet. And that will move forward in August. Am I correct by saying that?
That's when the public hearing is.
Yes.
Will that meeting, do you have a date for that August meeting?
It's in the, it's in the, August fourth, four o'clock. August fourth at four o'clock.
Four o'clock. And will it be here?
Yes.
And online. All the information is in the letter.
Well, I don't mean to ping pong with that, but to get a board definite answer is a much nicer thing. All right. Thank you very much, board. I hope you understand. I think that this is a little ludicrous to even have this in this economy. Thank you again for your tolerance and the job that you do.
Yeah, and just, and just really quick, this is, this bond validation process is based on a ten-year plan with twenty years of debt finance, which is, through our discussion and research, is the most physical responsible, responsible way to handle it. So we're not talking about something that's going to happen in like, in the next two years, all of this money is going to be spent. And again, I didn't want to get into it here, but I just want to make sure we're all understanding. This is a projected plan of ten years. And that's just, that's as far as we've gone out, ten years.
It's a capital improvement plan. Again, it is. Nothing has been approved. Nothing.
As I mentioned, Mr. Chairman, with the S R F, the board validated and authorized the issuance of the twenty million dollars of borrowing. And to date, we've borrowed eight million dollars to do the Lake Bank Restoration. That's comparable to what's going on here. It's the ability to finance it. And then the board at separate meetings makes the determination when to issue bonds and when to actually implement the project.
Yeah, and let's just state that again. So when we went through Lake Bank Restoration, we went through a bond validation process of twenty million. And that was-
Twenty, that was four, five years ago.
Five years ago. We approved twenty million. And to date, we've only spent eight of that, eight of nine. So it's projecting out, you spend it, it's like a, when we were talking earlier, it's like a, like a line of equity, you know? So it's a process. And we'll get into it more, I'm sure. So I just, I don't, I know there's a knee-jerk reaction when you see that number, especially in today's economy. But again, today's economy doesn't necessarily dictate our, our, our ability to plan for what's best for the district. Now, it does, it does potentially influence when we execute, you know, and what and when, you know, completely understand that too. But there's a lot of diligence that has taken place. We meet thirty times a year to request this, and staff works full-time on it.
I think though, and I, I would agree with you with planning and understanding of budget being projected out. Like, I've handled quite a few in my career. But to say that, to ask more money within the next two years, three years, from any community member here in Gateway is almost to the point of, again, how do you even justify it? It's eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month to be increased to your taxes if this passes.
Yeah, I completely understand that. And I think concerns are warranted, but we do have a district run as well.
Yeah.
So there is a standard that we're trying to obtain. We're trying to fix things before they have critical failure, which would be way more costly. But appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I guess we'll see you on the fourth again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Laura, who's next?
Kathy Flaherty has two things. She also has the Stony Brook medians and the special assessment.
Yes.
Good afternoon and happy belated Fourth of July. My name is Kathleen Flaherty from Stony Brook. You already removed the peanuts because Mainscape couldn't maintain them on the medium. So you want to put them back and they still won't be able to maintain them. Okay, so that seems to be not a very good choice. Also, concrete, we are not in a, we are in a gated community that is beautiful. We're not in some kind of health facility where they have everything concrete and sterile. So, okay, and, or to leave it. That was your choices. I don't see why we can't put more draw for store there that are low. The other thing you don't have is Mainscape should have a traffic person. Other landscapers have traffic people when they're doing their, their work. So I don't want to take up too much time. So I'm thinking that, you know, you need to look, read, look at all these alternatives and go back to the drawing board. Okay. I mentioned before that this board is not transferring. Having a meeting at four o'clock in the afternoon is not really benefit for those people who can, who work and cannot make a four o'clock meeting. Also, being in this room is not going to be, you're going to have a lot of people. They talked about inflation. I can give you an example of inflation in the past year and a half. A loaf of bread from what, ninety-nine cents to two dollars and nineteen cents. So that's what people are looking at when they see this. I've had many people call me to complain about that. So I really think you need to look at a later time for that meeting so that there will be more people able to attend it and in a bigger building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, true.
So Kathy, you're talking about the four o'clock, August the fourth?
I'm talking about four o'clock in August. Yeah, that, you know, people that I've talked to are really would like to come, but four o'clock is not, you know, they're working. So it's not a good time. And they don't want to be online. They want to be in person looking at you. Just let me tell you that.
All right, I have one final one. It's a mystery comment by Warren Davies. It just says non-agenda item.
A mystery comment.
I have no idea what it is. It says non-agenda item.
Left from Warren Davies, Stony Brook Advisory Committee Chairperson. I know Ms. Feinberg has handed out some material. I'm not sure exactly what all she passed out. I've not seen that. I'm not sure if you've seen the report that I have submitted to the district manager immediately after the incident that she's reporting on that being the grinding down of trip hazards down to where they would meet ADA compliance. This was a project specifically handled by the Stony Brook HOA. They send staff out. They drove all around the community, spotted about two hundred and seventy-five areas that needed to be ground down. And ADA compliance says anything over a quarter of an inch high has to be corrected. They handled all the information on it. Only thing that we have done, the Stony Advisory Committee, was to provide the funding from the O O four fund. It was about twelve thousand dollars to do that. They handled it. They foresight, some things fell through the cracks. One of the things that we had talked about at the advisory committee meeting was grinding down of driveways. And we said we weren't going to do that. And that apparently did not get aid to the vendor, nor to the CAM that was kind of overseeing it at that particular time. He was not aware of that either. I searched out and I went through all the driveways around Stony Brook, all seven hundred and seventy-eight, well, at that night. Because we didn't have a Stone Valley Loop, don't have sidewalks yet. And there were only two, Ms. Feinberg's and also one other one where the grinding was done on the driveway. They were both listed to be done on the list given to the vendor. The other one was pretty much the same. It had an orange spot on it that indicated that they had looked at it and said this had to be done. We couldn't find an orange spot at Ms. Feinberg's. But again, the HOA staff felt that was it because they put it on the list to be done. I got the list here. I got the list. I got the list.
Warren, you just need to address the board.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got the list from the, that the HOA people put together and also the list that they forwarded to the vendor. I got copies of them both. They're both exactly the same and highlighted things. As I drove around, I said, rode my bike around, looked at these, there's only three driveways that I had concern about. Ms. Feinberg's, one other one that they ground down on the driveway side, and one other one that did some damage to the pavers. In looking at how they were doing it, there are other paved driveways. But most of the park that was on level was the concrete, on a concrete side. And I got pictures of all these different things and how they did it and stuff. So the agents, I say, the HOA was doing all the stuff on it. And so we, we come in and just, just helped out with the funding and they handled all the other stuff after that. The vendor talked to him and he is willing to go back and try to repair the damage that was done. Of course, it's, it's a tough situation, I think, when you get to a point where you're trying to alleviate a trip hazard. And Stony Brook has had trip hazard. They've had a few incidents. And this is why I think they got started doing that. And when it's on the list and then suddenly you come across that, how, how do you cure that? Because if it's on the driveway side, it's going to do some damage to the driveway. Most of them were on the other side, were on the sidewalk side. I have learned since that time, researching, that there's a way you can probably lift up the sidewalk to bring it up to that level.
So Warren, where's the lift, the issue with the variance, was that as a result on the resident driveway side or the sidewalk?
Well, throughout Stony Brook's on both sides, but there's only two that we found, that I found, that was on the driveway side.
As a result of lifting?
Yeah, the driveway was higher than the sidewalk. And then they had to bring, you would try to bring down.
In the case of Ms. Feinberg, do you know?
All I know is-
Did the sidewalk settle or is the driveway left?
On the driveway side, on the driveway side.
Yeah, but I know your question is, I think the sidewalks, looking at the picture, because you see how the mold looks like the sidewalk on that corner went down, which didn't give the impression that the driveway was higher, just by the mold. Did that what it is, Margaret?
I mean, either way, if you're, if you're trying to fix that, you fix the sidewalk that is under our jurisdiction.
You- That sidewalk next to my driveway was not marked with orange paint. And saying it was on the list, the day that they came out to reach my driveway, Chris, the board president, looked on his list and my driveway address was not on it.
Well, I mean, I think, what we're trying to understand is regardless of what happened, if we didn't have authorization to-
Well, hold on. I think there's some questions need to be asked. First, were plans and specs prepared for this?
I'm sorry?
Were plans and specs prepared for this?
No.
You don't-
Hate the way they handled all that. They didn't put an RFP out. They just announced it.
Was there a pre-bid meeting?
No.
Where, can I just-
The last one, I take it there was no inspector either.
Can I interject here? Can we just, I'm actually chatting with Chelsea. We'd like to have staff handle this.
Yeah, which is the right thing to do. So, thank you, Warren. And I'm sure staff will coordinate with Stony Brook and Advisory Board.
Most of the stuff I had, we forwarded on to Tony so he could take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. We appreciate it.
I'd also like to request that a homeowner be kept in this process because I'm getting very little information from anybody. It's one of the majors, it's their fault, it's their fault, it's their fault. But something's going to be happening at the end of my driveway.
You, you will know. You will know. Yeah, we're, I don't have an answer for you yet. That's why I haven't told you anything. So, yep. Oh, no. No, no, absolutely not. Every, everything, you'll be in the loop on the whole thing.
One last question. Does the contractor have a bond? Contractor have a bond? Did he post a bond? Did the contractor post a bond?
It was only twelve, it was twelve thousand dollars. We haven't paid the invoice yet either. So we're holding payment.
Who's next?
That was it. There is, I don't have anything by-
Before we leave that, this has been routinely done for ten years in Pelican Preserve because the concern was, obviously, the trip hazard. You have two choices. You could bust concrete, put more. And the cost-effective way is to grind. I have never heard of an incident where a resident has said that their driveway was destroyed or seen what happened with, with Margaret's. But this, I mean, you can't have a trip hazard thicker than a pencil. I mean, think about that. You're not talking very much. Now, do you want to bust all that concrete, which is very expensive, or do you want to grind where it's appropriate? So, you know, just the threat of common sense in all this. People should know they're coming, absolutely. But this is a cost-effective way of handling a problem.
We, Bob, we're just the opposite. We will not grind anymore. Paul, as you did, it's, it's, something caused it. There's roots. You grind it off and it lifts the roots up. Then you're grinding more. We replace- We replace them all on advice of engineers.
And I and I hear you. And we had some of those choices, but the problem is that if you don't take the roots out when you put the new concrete.
The roots when we when we pull the pavement out. That's what you got to do.
Execution is is.
And it's expensive.
Further discussion.
This way, yes, it was a quick and dirty way to do it.
Yes, it's expensive. Okay, moving on.
I don't have any emails, faxes, and no one online has asked to make a comment.
Um, so we're so we're shifting around slightly. We're putting consent agenda approvals up front. Okay. Um, any items to pull for for item uh six for consent agenda A, B, and C?
I would just.
Well, other than that, the comment that.
I don't be adding the signing sheet.
Yeah. Yeah.
So um just we'll do that. Laura, we'll add the um the attendees. Okay, a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Second. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, we will move on to staff reports. Uh, we will start with District Council.
Uh, yes, a couple items working. Chelsea had a form for uh I'll call a new form of invitation to bid. Quite extensive and comprehensive. I've been going through that and making some red line changes and I'll get that to her uh before she gets back. So she will have it waiting when she gets back.
She's back Monday.
Yeah, it'll be there.
You say that very enthusiastically.
Yeah, it'll be there. And uh, working uh and once again, still working on a number of documents, trying to work with W C L N R. It's just a matter of everybody being really busy with regards to the FPL lands, the land for the public preserve access road and the disclaimer for uh the Commons Park and a number of documents like that. So I just need to circle back up with Charles on that.
It's my understanding, talking to Rick, that everything on the access road, which we we got to figure out a way to get this thing going, is that it's in the county's hand. It's in permit. Have we got something that's on our side that we've not done that they're going to come back and point to?
I don't know. I've not heard.
I just heard it's we're waiting on the county to come up with the permit approval.
I I don't know. I've not communicated with Rick on that. I'll follow up and find out with Laura.
But we need to. This this is taking forever to do something simple.
So I'll get with Rick by land student. Do we have a major Domo leading the parade that tells us the next step? Who's got to do it? Or is this just kind of happening once?
Next thing is take bids, actually get permit. It's hard work.
I'll ask Rick us this, to ask the LDO from both the city of the county and whatever permits from the city. I'll ask Rick.
Yeah, if it's somebody at the county that's holding it up and or the city, then let's just go political and get this over with. This is ridiculous.
I'll find out from Rick. I've not heard from Rick. I don't recall. Again, I've had a gazillion emails in the last couple of weeks.
We're pushing two years.
I understand.
It's ridiculous.
So I'll get with Laura and Rick by by land school on that.
But we got five people running for office. Maybe they'll one of them will get their ear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you guys remind me, the roundabout over by the school, is the county still maintaining that or is the school maintaining?
I just talked to Jim about that. It's the 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 roundabout is Lee County School District.
So the school is supposed to maintain. So Tony, is it possible?
Well, I just regarding the, sorry, I had to step off for a minute. Um, we've been reaching out to the school about the roundabout uh because we asked them to spray for the weeds and stuff in there too. So I'm working with Jim and Georgia's trying to contact them to try to get it sorted out.
Hold it. Is 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 the county's not responsible for the structure of the road though? Is it? It's just the landscape.
The school is responsible for the landscape.
I was going to say the county is letting touch that road.
Yes, the school itself, the gateway school, it's from the sidewalk in and then just the roundabout. Yeah, I talked to Jim this morning about it. It was horrible.
And what my issue with that, one, I was just, the reason why I'm bringing it up during District Attorney update is, you know, it's it's been neglected for quite some time. I I don't know if it's been properly maintained since uh point of completion. And I think there's probably two points of failure there. One is just the neglect of spraying it and keeping it maintained. And two, I don't think there's any uh landscaping um
Barrier?
Underlayment or anything under that shell.
That's what Jim said today.
If that's the case, we, why would you not? And and the reason why I'm bringing that up is we've got two. The one and then another one, you know, potentially going. If if the county's not at least taking the time to put a uh, you know, a weed barrier down, uh, that's one of the reasons I'm completely against that shell is you get weeds, it looks absolutely terrible.
And it will.
And it's very tough to maintain. So right now, we're coordinating with
We're trying to coordinate with.
County schools.
Yes.
If we don't see progress on that, then, you know, Tony, if there's maybe a letter or something that can be sent, uh whether it's to the school and and copied.
I think Jim did last time. We had something that we sent out.
Has anybody ever seen a vendor for the school out there working?
No, the, okay, so this when I, the last that I talked to, the only time that they actually came in and it was Laura was part of this. The school district said that their priority, because it's the school district, their priority is to make sure that the schools, individual schools are maintained and they are short-staffed. So that is not a priority for them. So then the 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 principal, her, so she had her people come in and do it. But it's a one guy staff, like it's one guy that does the entire school.
That's just not acceptable.
It's not. I mean, they they don't edge. I mean, it's horrible. It's it's really bad.
And I did see them out because when we had contacted them about the weeds in the middle, I did see them out there spraying something that was like two or three weeks ago and there's no change. I don't know what they were doing.
Yeah, they were mowing today.
We're still trying to get ahold of them.
I I guess the question is, since it's in the Lee County right of way, and Lee County and school business have worked out that arrangement, correct?
Just like that's probably with an agreement.
So like, so I guess the question is, we think we maybe contact somebody in Lee County. Is Randy searching in transportation? And not Randy now, uh, because Randy's been very helpful in dealing with gateway items.
Okay, well, I'll add that to my list.
Because maybe that's why they're not paying as much. I don't know why they're not paying as much attention to the district, but if both of us are saying that.
Staff will get it. We'll take care of it.
So.
Thank you. And.
Then working with uh with the group, the team on the validation and getting that filed and getting that all scheduled as well as um other documents associated with them.
And then Laura, no.
And the advertisement, and that was so much fun.
Yeah. Uh, Laura, no update for engineering today?
Uh, unless they're online for something. We know the two items that were on there are actually supposed to be for the next meeting.
Steven, are you on?
Hey, Doug. I am on.
Do you have anything for us today?
Uh, no, sir. We're trying to um keep all of our uh updates on the second meeting of the month.
Uh, we do have something from uh supervisor.
Yeah, Steve, uh, I've been getting hit like everybody else has on this uh August fourth meeting agenda and this stuff coming up. I think I'm sending out a boomerang and it's coming back and it hit it right at me. If you look at your capital improvement plan that the engineer prepared, which is, I thought, excellently done, it shows fifty-eight million dollars worth of work. But in the deal that showed up in the newspaper is seventy-four million dollars of work. Where'd the sixteen million come from?
Um, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I'll try to chase that down. Yeah. There's probably a logical explanation there. I'm not sure what it is, though.
It gets it gets worse because what we've done is we've shown the land use, single-family, multifamily, golf course and commercial, which is exactly what we have to do one oh one. We then go through our four methods of method uh assessment methodology that Russ Wire does. And it was my understanding that that fifty-eight million was being distributed across that gauntlet to come up with these numbers, in which case it would have not been fifty-three million under single, seven under multi, two under golf, and ten under commercial. That fifty-eight would have all been distributed among all four classes. We need to have some explanation and explanation quickly because that gets us now from a fifty-eight million principal amount to a seventy-four million of principal amount. And when you calculate the interest of twenty-year bonds on that deal, that just takes you to a hundred and twenty-five million principal and interest payments combined over the period of time for the full dollar value, which we all know is pie in the sky, but it's what we have to do to satisfy the legal requirements. I'm not worried about that. What I'm worried about is going to tell people who look at the engineer's report that identifies fifty-eight million dollars worth of work and it shows in the newspaper seventy-four million six twenty. What happened?
Yeah, I'm trying to retrieve the engineer's report now.
I brought mine with me and it's definitely fifty-eight million six hundred thousand dollars.
Any possibility of version?
No, this is in. The only thing that we changed at the last meeting, if you recall, we made a phone call to facilitate what Bill came up with on the issue of the land. And that was that was that was just language.
Yeah, that was language.
Didn't change any numbers. So fifty-eight, six, forty, in my opinion, is what should be the total of these costs.
If you look at, you know, it's in Russ's report. I just pulled up the assessment methodology report at page.
Who's got that report?
Well, it was a doctor.
I mean, I I don't physically have a copy.
We can make sure everybody has a copy before you leave today. Uh, it's section two point one.
Okay.
Talks about the finance plan, bond sizing, CIP funds of fifty-eight, six, forty, reserve funds, five million, nine oh four. And it goes to two years capitalized interest.
Yeah, I understand all that, but they're talking, they're talking Tony principal.
That's the seventy-four, six twenty.
So the fifty-four.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight is the is the debt amount. Seventy-four is that debt amount plus.
Total cost, reserve on two years capitalized interest.
No, 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 no. They go on down here and reads is a hundred and twenty-five million is the total capitalized cost.
That's assuming a big worth interest.
Yes.
But this is the par amount. We're talking par amount of the bonds is the seventy-four, six, twenty.
Okay, let's make this, put it in English. Do we have construction costs totaling fifty-eight million, six, forty, which is what they say?
Yes.
So what you're adding in then is non-construction costs?
God, they're financing, yeah.
Financial costs.
Okay, so what we call in the business, non-construction costs, engineering.
It's a bond sizing to take care of the capitalized interest, which is interest due before.
Okay, okay, I I got.
I have an answer from Rhonda. She says, when you finance the debt, the cost of the financing, the engineer's report only covers construction costs. When you finance the debt, you add reserve funds, capitalized interest, cost of issuance, and that adds to the.
Underwriters says a count of a million dollars.
So so I understand that. So and that's that's what we call totaling project cost, construction and non-construction. So if the total project cost, and that makes sense because the percentage is about what it should be, is seventy-four million, I guess what we're saying is, is that Russ's calculations through the assessment methodology just so coincidentally showed up that fifty-three million of that seventy-four is assigned to single family. Seven was assigned to multifamily, two to the golf course and the other.
That's just the way the percentage just broke out. Yeah. And and just to add to that a little bit, um, I am in the process of working with the bond group to put together a Q and A document based on a lot of the questions that we've been getting the same questions repeatedly, so we're putting something together.
My problem was, I thought when I went to the engineer's report, I I had the answer and I thought, somebody, somebody stepped on it here. We got a mistake.
Yeah, what also happened?
Doesn't have the soft costs identified.
Well, what also helps, and I think, and Lauren and I also talked about putting both the engineer's report and the assessment methodology online because in looking at it, if you recall, in the assessment methodology too, there's a roadway part debt by land use type. Then there's a water man, stormwater manager part debt by land use type. And so those are different numbers depending upon the land use types.
And that's and the tables are in here. And the type of people who's paying for it.
That's correct. And so those tables are in there too. By way of example, the roadway part debt by land use type is a total of like five point seven million.
We all need, as board members, need to see that or just don't say anything to anybody because why guarantee you we can get out and.
That's why we're doing the Q and A. So we we have consistent answers to people's questions.
Yeah, we'll make sure the board has hard copies if they want.
Yes.
Electronic documents to make sure.
Yeah, I just want to be able to answer somebody who's why is fifty-eight million not fifty-eight million? Well, it's not. It's apples and that, gorgeous. It's a construction cost of fifty-eight million, but it's a non-construction cost of sixteen million for a total project cost of seventy-four.
Correct.
Excluding interest. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so uh, anything else for for Steven, engineering?
One other thing, Steven, in uh is reviewing the North Haven and good plans and using the new permit criteria manual, I think applying that, Steven, is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
So and and he sent me a whole bunch of stuff to look at also, so I'll be looking at that next week.
Uh, Steven, have we gotten uh plans on that? I've seen some very, very preliminary plans of that West Haven. My community of Hidden Links uh is still getting over the shock that uh the sun is going to now rise over the buildings over the water.
Yeah, we uh it's um, we do have some plans. Um, I think I received them maybe three weeks ago, two weeks ago. We just finished up our first round of review. We provided comments to uh Hall Montez, the developer's engineer. Um, we've been working with staff and compiling comments. I can share that with you or staff can share that with you. They're proposing to uh build ninety-eight units. They're going to be fourplex and sixplex uh two-story units.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then they're going to ingress off of Gateway Boulevard, right adjacent to that open space at the north end of the wall at uh Hidden Links. And that in that same area is where their pump station is going to go that will pump into the forest vein in the sidewalk in Gateway Boulevard.
Yeah, they have two points of ingress egress. That proposed lift station is actually shown on top of an existing sixty-inch RCP, so they've got to move that.
I was going to say, we got that. Yep, it's right on top.
And then uh the other point of ingress egress is in the existing um City of Fort Myers right of way. That kind of cuts in between Arborwood and
That's that.
Castoya and Pareto. They're they're coming in off of that road.
That's the looparound road.
Yeah.
Okay.
They got a date for for actually building that road?
If you talk to the county people, it'll sublate sometime right before hell freezes over.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, that's where it's at right now, but they still have.
Paper, but nobody plans to do it.
That's correct. But the issue is the hundred-foot right of way is in the way. And they're not giving it up. So it makes it very complicated for the developer to work within the confines of that triangle. The only thing I say, Steve, is just make sure, keep us up to speed on those plans. We, that that thing is just in a position where it could cause a lot of trouble.
Yeah, I mean, um, if, so we have plans that they're, you know, trying to move forward with. We're providing comments on those. I don't know if they're the same set that you have. Um, would you, do you need a set so you can look at?
I have a set in my office.
Okay, I'll I'll just come look at Laura's. The set I've got is nothing more than a preliminary sketch. Okay.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, thank you, Steven. We appreciate it.
I'm handling.
You can do your full district.
Well, before we leave, Tony, are you done with what you got?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. Uh, where do we stand on the Palazzo Road turn?
I'm about halfway through the title work now, so I I wanted to bring that to the board and next meeting and wrap that up.
So we think we're close.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Laura, your update, please.
All right, um, soccer field usage, uh, Georgia and Tony have been working together. She sent over the contract documents to him to look over. We're hoping to have them back to have at the seven twenty-one meeting to be signed since the season starts in August. Uh, we didn't change anything with rates as agreed to earlier, so none of that changed. It's just we added some verbiage um per the last, I think it was last board meeting or two board meetings ago about um them having possibly sharing the cost of the extra patrols for the parking and things like that. That was the only thing that we added to them this time.
And then and the plan is for all the league agreements and field usage, we will address that during this ba- or this budget time period to go into effect the next full year.
Yes, well, that'll be all part of the new revised fee schedule.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, um, and the fields are pretty much booked out already. Um, George has been keeping track. So we have B one, the Cruz Adult Soccer, uh Gateway Flag Corp, Gateway Flag Football, the Gateway Soccer Association, and then there's a new Florida Soccer City that'll be using the field. So that's where we're at right now.
Did that private group come back with those adults that came in and petitioned to use the fields later?
For a few months.
The flag or soccer?
Soccer.
Soccer.
There's the gentleman that plays on the Sunday nights is coming back. That's Cruz. He's he's going to stay. Um.
And I would recommend that we put on our schedule for staff, maybe it's once or twice during a season. We need to have day of check-ins. So we need to have someone from staff walk around, even just, you know, routine check-in to make sure.
That's part of the staffing that we have for this year for some of the recreation maintenance positions. One of those, um, we'll have weekend hours.
Okay.
And evenings. Um, we have, I have some, I have a couple more yet.
Yeah, just really quick while we're on the field. What, um, can you just supply us with the the or at least me, if I'm the only one that worries about this, but just the, what is the maintenance schedule for the fields over the summer?
Um, I know they're being worked on. Now they've gotten some of the work done. They're going to be doing some sodding because there's, I forget which type of grass it is. Yeah, we're working on that right now. Yeah, we're working on that right now.
I'll contact you on the.
Yeah, I have uh Jim, Jim's been checking in, so.
Maybe I'll just meet with Jim.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we have some staffing changes here for the better. Um, our our pool, previous pool supervisor, Tim, has been promoted to Recreation Manager. We interviewed, oh, gosh, probably eight or ten people for that role, and it was a really hard decision. Um, but we we promoted Tim, so that was as of last Monday. He is our new Recreation Manager. So um Rick and Jim report to Tim now, and Tim is reporting to me in the interim until we get a Public Works Manager. And then once we get a Public Works Manager, Tim will report to that person.
Can you send the board that what that updated job description looks like?
I will, yep. And then uh we also filled the contracts manager. And then, uh, we also filled the Contracts Manager slash P I O, um, we have a guy working in the office now, his name is Randy, he will start August first.
Okay, awesome.
And I'll, I'll get some more information together, I've been, um, putting together an announcement, like a formal announcement of all of that, so.
Laura, that position is only until we get a.
No, that's a permanent position, that's basically replacing where the Business Manager role was before, so this person will take all of the contracts and overs, and make sure, uh, worry about the certificates of liability insurance, anything related to contracts. They'll do all the Facebook posts, um, work on the newsletters, all of those kinds, he has a journalism background, so he has a lot of experience with writing. Very nice guy, I think he'll fit in real good here, I'm very excited.
Yeah, Paulie said, where are you gonna put him?
He's gonna sit right outside my office, that, that workstation right there, that's where he'll go. So, he'll be between Chelsea and I.
And the fax machine.
There's no, no, the copier's out, no, that's how we moved the copier, that's where the copier used to be.
But that's what, that's what it's gonna be.
He'll sit right outside my door, yep, there's a desk there and computer and everything.
I couldn't be on a permanent diet because it ain't growed, it's no room.
Uh, then, uh, just for your information, we have three active sewer breaks right now, um, the one in Callaway Greens, the one has already been repaired, the second one is scheduled to be repaired on Monday, uh, weather permitting. Notices were sent out for that one as well as, uh, the Arizo one in Pelican, which is scheduled for Tuesday slash Wednesday of next week. Notices were also sent out for that. Um, since the weekend, we have a very active break in Silver Lakes, um, I was, that's the camera stuff I was looking at, it looks like a washing machine. Um, so we're just waiting for Shannon Doherty, Kenny's waiting for Shannon Doherty to get back to him, um, we're hoping to be able to do it as a SIP, but it, we're waiting for them to look at the video.
Silver Lakes or Santa Lucia?
Silver Lakes.
Silver Lakes?
Yeah, so Santa Lucia's done, that was a, that was an easy fix, but this is a very active break in Silver Lakes. Um, they've adjusted the floats and the lift station, everything to help take some of the burden off the pumps. So that's that, and then I talked already.
On, on that, on the break, so it seems like we've had several significant breaks.
I did ask Kenny about that, and he said it's really not any more than normal.
We're not outside.
Cause I did, I'm like, is it just because I'm more aware of them because of my role change, and he said, no, it's not any more than.
Yeah, it's because we're checking things like pump stations and checking.
We, we have the capability to be more, yes, we can be more proactive because we have software to alert us when there's extra activity.
So, which is, which I think is, is important discussion, it's, it's not that we're having more than usual, it's just we're able to find things.
Yes.
Instead of it sitting and doing it for months and months until.
Exactly, we're be, able to be more proactive.
That's correct.
So, cause I, I specifically asked that question, I just said, is it because I'm more aware of them, are there more, and he said, no, it's the same.
Okay.
So, and my last thing I already touched on briefly is the F A Q document, um, so I do have a request if you, if you board members are getting questions from people, can you please send them to me so that I can start putting them together and add them to my document? Because I know we, we get asked pretty much the same questions by everyone, and so I would like to be able to just put those all in one place, and then that'd be something that we can share.
And here's what I would recommend, so when you, when you send the F A Q out, I would also, if, if there is just a, a couple of sentence, uh, that if we get a response, that we can send that response out, uh, and maybe we could talk about it offline.
Sure.
Cause specifically today, I think I read a couple of different posts on different social sites.
Mm-hmm, I've seen them as well, yes.
I just, my response was, you know, attend the meeting on the fourth, and, you know, just with some, like a, just a canned response, so we don't, cause we do need to have a consistent voice.
And that's why we had, that way Georgia and Julie have something when the customer care inquiries come in, I've been handling most of them. Um, I've talked to people on the phone, I've been handling the emails, and, um, yeah, I just want to have a consistent answer, so.
Yeah.
Send them out, so anything that you guys are getting, if you could please send those to me, and I'll, I'll make sure they get added to the list.
The biggest one is people are thinking we're approving projects, we're approving nothing.
Right, and they think that the whole debt is gonna be incurred at one time.
Basically a lot of.
That's, that's, yeah.
It's, nothing has been bought at all.
Right, and I did put that in there, that it's basically like a construction loan or, or a line of credit, we're just asking for, to have this much money available, and I also said similar to the lake banks, that we're not gonna spend it all at once, it's just.
And it's more cost effective for us to do it in, in a bulk.
Right, because then we don't have to pay for all of this.
It is to do it by, by logic.
Right.
The other thing is, there, there could be a project that we don't even know about.
Right.
They could surface within the next two to eight years, ten years.
And they say we have the capability to take care of it.
And we would have the ability to take care of it, now we might have to move and shuffle, but we have the ability to do it.
Right, and I did start out the, the letter with a little bit of background, kinda how we ended up here too, so.
Well, the other one is a lot of people I've talked to were absolutely shocked when they did not understand, people coming from the north don't deal with this. Up north, you have twenty-year, thirty-year bonds, it's, it's ordinary, it's common. Down here, if you're a C D D, you get five years and five years only unless you go through this process. Who would ever in their right mind go out and debt finance for five years, something that's got a twenty, thirty-year life?
Right.
I mean, if, unless you just wanna have high rates, you wouldn't do it.
And a good example of us, I think, doing some due diligence with companies on, again, Lake Bank, um, you know, being able to look and, and determine this next wave, cause I think it's probably another year out before we hit that next, next wave. Now, some of that was because of the rains and.
We've got two more years of five each, so.
But we do look at, you know, uh, uh, the, the cost when we're making those decisions, because it's, it is more expensive to do business today than it was two years ago. So, I mean, we definitely take that into account when we're looking to approve projects, because, you, you know, unless there is something critical, critical failure, or a, uh, you know, risk or some kind of liability.
Something you can anticipate.
We would prefer to defer when, when we can, so.
The, the only thing that I heard was later on, and I wasn't gonna get in an argument over it, but we have in the past, and it's been for years, we've attempted to move meetings back to six o'clock to have and facilitate people that work, and they don't show up. They don't show up, I'd be willing to go one more time and moving this meeting from, cause we're gonna be here.
It doesn't matter.
Move, doesn't matter to us, move it from the four, four o'clock setting to the five o'clock setting.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I was sensitive to that comment too, I don't have a problem.
Me neither.
And just, we're gonna be here anyway, just have it go from four to five, what we had to do is issue the.
No, we, we've already began the paper, and there's, there, there are certain timeframes in which the notice needs to go in the paper, in which the notice needs to be mailed out, we've achieved those timeframes, and the second notice in this paper is gonna be hit tomorrow. Now, at four o'clock, we can say this item will be taken up at five, but, so it's basically earlier than four, but I think we need to keep it at four.
Well, here's, here's, let me make a suggestion here, one, one second, one second, my suggestion is, the, the bond, uh, the, the public hearing that we're having on the fourth is to approve basically a line of bread, there's nothing, we're, we're, the residents will not incur any increase as a result of that meeting at that time.
For that time.
Not this year, hold on.
What gets approved and finalized is the assessment rule that sets the maximum amount of principal hard debt per benefited unit.
Yes, but my point.
And then every time we issue a series of bonds, we do a second, a supplemental assessment resolution that actually.
Changes that.
Dollar amount.
Yes.
For that particular series of bonds.
So what I would say is, you know, if, if people are concerned, uh, and they have issues, we absolutely, I, I respect everyone's opinion of voice, uh, but the public hearing, there's, nothing will come out of that that will impact the residents at that meeting. Now, what I would suggest.
That's not totally.
It was.
Down the road.
Down the road, I mean, at this particular time, so, well, let me finish one second, please. But where, what I would suggest is when it comes down to our budget, we, that would be the opportunity to push that meeting back. Um, we're looking at assessments, cause that, we will be talking.
That one's at six.
Those are on assessments.
Yeah.
And that's already set and been noticed also.
I think, I think that one's scheduled for six.
In that meeting, that could be an opportunity.
That could be continued also.
Yeah. That could be an opportunity, because we can't move to four without.
The eighteenth is already set for six.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's the meeting that we, you know.
That's already at six.
It's already at six.
But the, the debt service assessments as to the capital improvement project will not be levied on the property as of, for the tax bill coming up in November of this year, because we have not issued any debt.
That's correct.
So, the purpose of the August fourth is to hear any objections, person comes in and says, my property's not better. Or, uh, this isn't available public purpose, or there's like a couple of criteria, and the board sits as an equalization board and says, okay, we approved this final assessment rule, that gets adopted and approved. That's the maximum debt, again, per unit, that can ever be assessed. Down the road, when you go to issue the actual bonds, after the validation, the board may say, rates are such and such, the market is such and such, we don't wanna issue the bonds now.
Move it down the road.
You know, whatever, then at that time, you get the, let's just say the first series is a five thou, just, I'm just making this up.
Yeah.
Five, series twenty, twenty-three, a five million dollars to do X, Y, Z. Those bonds then get issued, there's a supplemental assessment resolution, Russ does a supplemental assessment report, says, here's the actual debt levied on the property for issuing that bond, just as an example, recently doing one for Stony Brook down in Astero. They own the golf course there, that C D D is buying a five-acre clubhouse tract up front where Duffy's is, there's a pro shop that, that C D D rents from the owner of that property. That five-acre clubhouse tract was built by U S Homes and then sold to a third party as opposed to being sold to the C D back in oh three. So the C D D is saying, we want that clubhouse, it's adjacent to our golf course, it makes us whole, whole bunch of nine yards. So that district authorized a capital project to acquire that clubhouse tract, all the parking, all the buildings, and to do some roadway improvements, and to do some line of sight landscaping improvements, and there's, so they, they authorized issuing up to eleven million dollars in debt, and the validation was fourteen million, six hundred fifteen thousand dollars. That was what was validated, now we're coming along and doing the actual series bonds, there's a tax exempt piece and a taxable piece, all that. But the, the debt that's being issued initially would levy thirteen thousand per each E R U, total, annually estimated a thousand and change. The way the market is, the way the rating is for those bonds, the anticipated total aggregate debt is not thirteen per unit, it's ten thousand per unit. And the annual debt assessment is not a thousand and change, it's like seven, six.
So everything went down.
Because, because, well, and, and again, you, you got the actual numbers, you got the actual series, you got the interest rates, you got the rating and all that. So again, I'm not saying that what happened here, but that's what happened, we validated up to here, we're issuing.
But no, nobody's holding a gun to our head to spend a nickel on any one of that fifty-eight million dollars at this point in time. But we do have a fiduciary responsibility, we have to keep this thing whole.
Right.
And we gotta do that, uh, like what goes on Washington or not, we still gotta do our thing, just like the county has to do theirs, so. The time to take and get all mad is not now, it's when we come back to vote on that project that makes this real. Yeah. That's when the time is.
Okay, well, if the eighteenth meeting is at six o'clock, that's a good copy.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Yeah, we always hold the budget meeting at six.
And we can test the waters too, cause I would think that if I was gonna show up, I'd show up at that budget meeting, cause that's gonna impact me as a resident.
Immediately.
Immediately, the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that's, in your F A Q, people need to understand, you know, the, whatever.
We've been telling people that that's not gonna be on this assessment.
It may be two, it may be two to three years before we touch a dime of that.
Right.
Uh, so, okay, uh, moving, uh, what else do you have?
That was the last, that was all, thank you.
I think we solved a lot of issues.
We'll see.
Can we repeat this back on August the fourth?
I'll check Facebook tomorrow and I'll let you know if we, if we did.
Hey, again, I, I fully understand that it's, it's not a simple concept to understand, again, uh, when we did the S R F, you know, Lake Bank restoration, that far away, we had the same issues, same questions, very much understand.
The only difference was that was a single project.
Right, we had the same issue about.
Same issues.
Validating twenty million, not actually.
Well, I, I remember when, I think I was the one who maybe brought up that my projection said twenty-five million, and I, I thought the feathers were gonna get picked off of the, uh, over that one, but, uh, that number still isn't very far off. But some of the people made a good point, uh, these costs, these unit costs of construction are, are crazy, they are just crazy right now. You've got blacktop, blacktop, paving, is that forty percent, forty percent, road that you did.
Concrete's about the same.
Yep, we did a, we did a project and the engineer.
Nobody's complaining about the appreciating home value.
Right.
No, nobody says anything about that.
That's right.
All right, let's, let's keep moving, uh, on to administrative, uh, items, this is gonna be eight A. So, there's been some, you know, talk, or, or comments today from, from the public, I've, uh, I've heard some just offline too. The three options that we have, I think we need to discuss this, I mean, we can't do nothing. Uh, my concern with the concrete is, how do you maintain irrigation, uh, does that mean we're gonna not irrigate that, that area?
I, I just think those three, I don't know where that came from, but just, but, here, just, just what I did with this, it's worthless. I stopped there and looked at it, the, the concrete, while it might be an engineering practical idea, you got the problem with the water, and then the second thing you're gonna look like, it's gonna look like downtown New York City. I mean, it's, it's gonna look like crap, why can't you go in there, bring the level of earth down about two inches below the top of the curb? Go in and put in a good, keyword, good landscape fabric, and put it across the top of that. Put the, uh, instead of the topsoil back, put in some of these new, uh, landscape products, I saw it over at, uh, Home Depot and was very impressed with it.
Turf?
Not the turf, the, the, uh, synthetic materials, it's a heavier, like a rubberized, and you can.
Yeah, like a synthetic turf.
But it's not a turf, it's.
It's, it's like rubber mulch.
Like chips.
Yeah, it looks like mulch, but it's, it's rubber.
You can get black, you can get brown, you can make an earth tone, but that stuff doesn't move and doesn't go anywhere.
So you don't have to worry about it going off.
And put it down and recess it so that it's below the curb, you can't hump it up, because the first thing you'll do, somebody's gonna have a car up there, and then you will have a mess, cause they'll be throwing that stuff all over the road. But recess it down, put that in there, and it's going to look like a natural deal, the water can get to it, but that peanut deal, the, the deal we, that, you talk about, why do you want to create something that just causes more maintenance?
So what I would look at too, and I.
We don't want that.
I, I love that concept of just trying to make it work, um, and let it be aesthetically pleasing, so you've got three, what I consider three areas, maybe even four, you've got palms, uh, you've got exora, so you got shrubbery, uh, and then you might have some plant.
And you can do any of those material.
Palms, you could just probably isolate them, you know, shrubs, if you're looking, if you're gonna regrade, you'd have to probably pull that shrubbery out.
Some of that smaller landscape.
But exora is inexpensive, right?
And there's, there's cocoa plum in there too.
What, what, what.
I like the idea, cause the problem is.
What I was gonna propose is to have, yeah, what I was gonna, and I don't, I don't see how you can get any better with the maintenance and the safety, they're both a lot easier to do. Get, get, uh, Lanescape, uh, Mainscape and Freddie in, and say, guys, let's go up there and let's just take a representative area. Maybe the bullnose is one of the two entrances where it sees, gets a lot of eye contact. Experiment with it.
Pilot it.
Pilot it.
So.
Get, get everybody's opinion on what it looks like.
I will tell you this, we went there with Jim at least three times and with Freddie, so the first, so we started with the first Versailles, where the big royals are, there's about ten inches of roots there, so that one, it's kinda limited, there is nothing you can do there unless you're gonna shave like ten inches, twelve inches of roots to be flat with the curve, and then you, and then you would have to do another two inches to, to add anything else.
That's.
The first, first one on eighty, the first one on eighty-two on Gateway Boulevard, so that first one.
I wasn't looking at this, I was looking at the area in between the trees.
So the area that you would quote-unquote concrete over, that's the area that I think Ed is talking about, coming up with an alternative solution, which would be, you know, grade it and maybe.
Where he wanted to put.
Use a material that, one, if you regrade it, you're not gonna have spill over, and two, if you find, and I was thinking like, either some kind of synthetic turf, or, you know, if you're doing synthetic mulch or just something, it's not gonna spill over.
That's what you gotta do, you don't want it to spill over.
And you don't have to worry about maintenance.
We look at Daytona, Daytona started, um, the district there actually with a synthetic turf, and, I mean, it looked really good, cause, you know, at first you're looking at it, what it, it looks like crap, and, but it's not, it's, it's high grade, it, it looks like turf.
If water goes through.
For soccer, yeah, so.
And that's what I would love on the roundabouts too.
So, the, so at Daytona, most of their, their center medias, their roundabouts, and the sidewalks, it's all synthetic, and it's, and then it's, well, a few pictures, and I shared this with Margaret, they have the royals very narrow, that, that, they couldn't match, very narrow medians with the royals and the synthetic. It, it looked really, really nice.
I'd like to see, uh, Mainscape, come back and we tell them, these two or three things we've talked about, take ten feet and go up there and do the ten feet, and let's just do a little beta test.
Sure, we can do, um.
And get, get public input based on those of which, what they like.
I'm chatting with Chelsea, um, we, we agree, I mean, I, I think that's a great idea, we can do pilots with the rubber mulch and the artificial, like artificial turf in the middle there, which, because we did have discussions with Mainscape about that they need to do a better job with their M O T as well, uh, that, that will help with some of the safety concerns, uh, but yeah, I, I think the rubber mulch or, or an ad, like an astral turf, they have such, you can't even tell now, some of it, it looks like real grass.
And I think that's going to be important too with like these medians, especially like one of the school. I mean.
Yeah.
If they would have just done synthetic turf around instead of it, to begin with. And I know that we're talking about what to do with the roundabout.
That's a good idea.
You know, so if we can pilot, it looks, looks good. And I'm not, there's two things. One, maintenance is just very minimal. Two is, does it look good? And three, is there something with turf that we're not aware of that, you know, might cause some kind of problem?
I, I do know why, I believe, I shouldn't say I know, I believe I was told that the cost to lower those beds is not cheap either. I mean, there's a pretty significant labor cost in getting that material down to a point where we would be able to put the mulch in.
We're not, you're not, you're not talking that deep.
Well, some of it is.
Have two inches.
Some of it is.
Below the curve is what you have to go.
I got, I got four boys and three shows.
Some of it's.
Oh, well, I'll have Jim reach out.
Okay.
You're like the guy that had a grinder on Margaret's driveway. Take care of the bump.
Okay. All right. So that one, we're going to table, we're going to push it back to staff. You'll work with mainscape to come up with some, uh, some options. And I think if you coded them and say, hey, we want, here's what we're looking for. We don't want concrete, we want some type of synthetic material. And see what they come back with.
I think they're just, they're concerned just with their butts hanging out in the street when they're up there having to do maintenance and I understand that, but it still needs to look.
Their concern with what?
Their butts hanging out in the street.
Not having somebody to safety.
Yeah, it's a safety issue when they're, because they, there's, it's so narrow when they're doing the maintenance, they don't have, they're right there with the cars. It's kind of scary, but I mean.
Those medians have been in place for.
Ever, yeah.
Years and we've never had it.
Sure. And I think having the rubber mulch in the, the, if we do that in the synthetic turf a hop, because we have cars driving up there and taking out stuff all the time too and.
And again, this might be an opportunity, but we have talked about trying to build a landscaping committee. This might be a good opportunity for us to.
Tell her, tell her to bring back about fifteen dull pineapple plants and we'll try those.
You play that Green Island five because the gateway greens there, that is a, that's low ground, it's slow grower. We have that in my little lakes too.
She laughed at you, Mr. Tinkoff.
Very, very slow grower and, um. That'll be an option.
I think there's options to go up there, but the three that we had presented today just don't get it.
Okay.
Let them go back and come up with something else.
Yeah, we can come up with some other ideas.
Okay, the next item is, uh, eight, eight B.
John?
Yes?
Does that, do you have somebody concerned with the option?
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, I think we should. It would probably be.
Well, they are, I mean, I, I, I have to, they are gateway's medians. They're not Stony Brook's medians. They are gateway's, but I understand they are outside your neighborhood, but they are our medians.
I would, I'd probably say, you know, engage the advisory council just for oversight, just, you know, be, be good stewards. Okay, um, so the next.
The execution of the contract.
Yeah.
This, this is, it, it basically is a done deal, isn't it? Alls we're doing is authenticating the.
Yeah, just confirm, ratifying, which the board had authorized, just, just to make sure that, uh, it's in the public record in four minutes. And there was a sixty day due diligence.
Glad, glad, glad to see some of that, uh, reasoning, uh, better reasoning showed up. But, uh, because I recall at the last meeting, uh, he'd never accept that offer, so I'm glad.
They did. They did. They accepted it. Yep.
Oh, he's by his right mind.
Well, they, we.
This, this market didn't go last forever.
We have an appraisal that shows that that's what it's worth. So, yeah.
Just to refresh me, my memory, uh, do we have restrictions on putting an add in building in the current park area, pool area? Was that what the?
They're, they're, they're jumping through hoops. The D from W C I.
Precluded entity.
Has a, has a limitation of its use only for parks and recreation use. What we're trying to do is obtain a disclaimer reverter of that or disclaimer of that interest. W C I L N R is trying to ascertain the appropriate entity if one exists that could actually execute that disclaimer similar to what was done at the Girl Scout building site. Then there's also an issue there from the standpoint of the zoning, bringing the other zoning verification letter to Lee County. But it appears that that site is designated as a park and park district on the map. So it may require an administrative change or resolution, uh, to the zoning.
So from those issues to the site we're, we're looking, we would have made buy, we don't have the problems there.
Well, we have, I just.
To the two new lots, right.
I just received, they've worked for the title commitment yesterday, day before. I'll be issuing the title commitment over the weekend so we can get to the surveyor on Monday. The surveyor then will have a two week turnaround at the most. I don't think it would take that long if he's already done his field work because there's not that much there. But there are covenants restrictions at their Fairway Lakes Office Park.
That was what I was going to bring up.
They're in the, they're in my packet of stuff to look at.
Do we have setbacks or anything like that that would preclude the number of cars that could park there and all that?
The, the restrictions are listed in the title commitment as an exception, and I have a copy of those to go through, see what those issues are. I'm preparing a letter also to Lee County zoning verification.
Before we pull the trigger on purchase, we'll have these answers.
Correct. Once again, we have a sixty day due diligence.
Okay, so we got sixty, we can approve it today, but we can back out in sixty days if we find out.
We have June twenty seconds, the effective date. So that's, uh, August twenty first, I think we calculated, we can terminate for no reason.
And Tony, I was, is what restrictions do, do we have about building a facility where we're going to use a portion of it and lease the other side of it? Are we allowed to do that?
You can't. I guess the question is which entity are going to lease it?
So if we built a.
Create revenue?
Yeah, I mean, if we build a building and we're going to leverage half of that building for, uh, for district use, the other half, let's say it's office.
The district can lease it, the question then becomes. How are we going to finance the construction and that's around the bond council, tax council, whether or not, whether or not that piece would be a taxable bond.
That's right.
The, but we're getting back to this whole.
I'm just looking at our options.
I think, I think with the square footage we want and the parking that is going to require, you're not going to have any points because your front setback and your back twenty foot at damn lake management easement, who has that stupid thing? It'd be pretty good for us to encroach on our own management easement, but you, you're limited there. You're limited.
I just wanted to pose the question.
No, I mean, again, the district has the authority in one ninety to lease any of its property. Uh, but then you get into the question of the sales tax.
The bond people haven't spoken.
We also get into the question of, does that make it then subject to adware and taxation if you're leasing part of it? I mean, so, and then the taxable bond versus the non-tax, non-tax exempt.
But let's get by all the hoops to make sure that it is buildable, uh, and will meet our needs. The last thing we want to do is to get over there and find out our hands are tied because we can only have twenty parking spaces or whatever. That would be insanity.
And just a little side conversation. Do you think that it would be worth it for us to approach the church, see if they have any interest in buying, uh, the property adjacent to their parking lot where the fun park is?
It was also suggested that maybe we look into the area where the fun park is and possibly do something there.
Here we go again, where we got this problem of this same issue came up with, uh, uh, trying to get Stony Brook back their roads.
I think, I think that's easier for the fun park, because part of it is, you name it surplus because of a number of features, its location, what's there and, and I think that's easier. It's no longer needed for that.
I don't know about the church, but I, what about the property that just bought?
Or just putting it up for sale. I mean, it doesn't matter, but.
But it's, it's so.
I say sell it.
It's so, uh, what, what's where it went landlocked.
Yes.
Uh, it's tough to get to that, but that new building that where we were going to buy five, six years ago, what about them? Because it's on their backs, backs.
You mean the property that we were going to spend three hundred fifty thousand, we're now looking at eight hundred thousand plus.
A building, yeah.
That's the one.
That was basically railroaded by two people.
You, you got it.
We can check on all of that. I'll, I'll, I'll add it to my list.
Are we talking about C P?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also known as the Girl Scout. Formally, formerly.
So maybe we can address the, the church and the owners of the property if they have any interest.
Yeah, and to, and to that point, to, if the board was to be reminded set to convey that property. The board would then need to adopt a resolution that would make it determinations no longer lead to public purpose, no one to need them for district purpose, no future needs anticipated.
That could be, that could be argumentative.
I think it's warranted because we've got the commons area. We're looking to build that out at some point. So we could, we could replace, you know, I think we could, I think we could make, um, we could justify.
Cross one bridge at a time.
Or ground lease.
But I'm saying, in order to fund one, we.
Cause there's no structure, there's nothing there.
Yeah, I'm going to get general.
Yes, yes, sir.
What is this property for?
I'm sorry?
What is this property for?
The admin building.
Yeah.
New admin building.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I thought you had a, uh, something else.
But one, one other, one other aspect with regards to that, uh, from the standpoint of determining hypothetically a conceptual site plan for parking. That might be something you may want to task Tetra Tech or ACOM to do as part of the due diligence. In other words, we have a survey, but the survey is just going to show what, uh, encroachments and or eastments based upon the title work.
Somebody needs to do a shell on the property.
Yeah, we have the, we have the pod, gateway pod that applies. We have the covenants that apply. I think it'd be helpful. I'm not a planner. I'm not an engineer. I can't draw straight lines without a ruler. I could draw curves with a quarter. So I would suggest that maybe ACOM or Tetra Tech be engaged to, or, or hold on to.
Just.
Just a quick, a concept plan saying, if we wanted, I'm just picking a number, a twenty thousand square foot building across the lot lines. What would that require for governmental office, for parking, for open space, water management, such as landscape?
Well, see, that's, 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 that's the issue that I was trying to get down to. When you start indicating this, you go to the county, which we have to go to.
Yes.
They have that little book they've got, that, that one chapter that points out what you're doing and it tells you the spaces you have to have and this, that and the other.
That's correct.
It, it doesn't leave much to the imagination.
But I think it's.
I totally agree. Let's get Tetra Tech or somebody.
Or ACOM.
Whoever.
Tetra Tech is working on this kind of in the background already.
Well, somebody needs to take that two properties, put a building on it of the square footage we're talking about. And then take all the setbacks and see how many parking spaces you get.
Okay.
And because it's, that will be a test.
No, I think it's a good point.
And if we heard anything from the fire department, they're still, I know there's some concerns on that piece of property. I don't know if they have any interest in maybe releasing that.
They do not.
You've reached out to them?
Yes, we met with the chief.
Okay, so they're going to hold on to that?
Well, they're still trying to figure out how.
They don't know what they're going to do with it yet, but they, at this point, they are not interested in selling it.
All right, let's, uh, so we.
Oh, just a motion to confirm and ratify the execution of the chair of the contract with Bruski Brothers.
That was, I'll second it. It was signed on the twenty second of June.
Uh, any further discussion? I'll call the votes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Future board business, uh, do you have the agenda man? Uh, any questions on the agenda management components? I do like this. Uh, membership workshop is the, uh, the twenty seventh of, of July. That'll be at, at the club. We're doing lunch there, right?
Yes, it's from ten to two. I hope so.
Okay, babe, but you get lunch.
I'll be crabby otherwise.
Street lighting workshop, uh, that'll be on the second of August. And I think that's it from that perspective.
Have you, well, excuse me, you're talking to them. Would you make sure, I've been dealing with them, but evidently they were on the line at the last meeting. Because I got phone calls, they were, I wonder why I was maybe so, uh, uh, distrustful of F P L. In, in the meantime, in the last three weeks, a lot of stuff has happened. We've got a nine thousand dollar rebate back, uh, for L E D lights that they were giving us credit for, but all that other stuff's going away. But the big length thing is when they come, make sure they come to be able to talk about stuff that impacts us, like converting to L E D. And what we're looking at in doing that. I don't want to have them to come out here and talk about, oh, well, I don't know if that shoebox type design will hold it. Now, I don't want you to come out here and talk about what you don't know. I want you to come out here and tell me what you've observed and what you will do. But to take and even talk about giving anything over to them and they're not going to do what needs to be done to make it an improvement, what are we doing it for?
Okay, see, I, it's funny because I, uh, the last video when I was, I, I was in here, we transferred ours and we had nothing but. I mean, for us, it worked great. Like they doing the maintenance, they updated the L E D, no cost, no, anytime they would call within three days, we get somebody there.
Ever since that meeting, everything has been a hunky door.
We switch over ours is since two thousand and six. And then just a few years ago, I had them install a no cost, five other streetlights and change everything to L E D. They gave me the choice, the yellow, the white. So for us, I think it is, we don't have the tall ones. It's sixteen dollars a pole and we don't do anything besides reporting, like there's something wrong.
Need all the tall ones.
Yes.
But you're.
But there, there, we already have that on their radar.
The other thing that we, I, I don't know who all is going to be coming to this for them, but as we embark upon aeration, there's a major, major problem in getting electrical meters to, to, uh, hook up your aeration. Okay, you can, you can go buy it all, but then you can't get meters out of F P L for months and months and months. So I'd like to make sure that they're addressing those future needs.
Good point. Bring that up while they, we, yeah.
Yep, I can bring that up. I know you're, I know exactly what you're talking about because I'm still work, I'm still working on that one. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's ridiculous.
We'll, we'll, we'll make a list and bring that up.
Come with knowledge of our issue.
Of our issues.
Yeah, but to, to, to say, we'll, we'll get back to you. Let's, let's make this the meeting.
They don't have.
If they could come to, if they have a good, uh, use case of another community to be equal to our size where they've done conversions and, you know, some examples, that'd be great.
And if you, if you guys have any outstanding issues in your areas, if you get those to me and Chelsea, like in the next, like by middle of next weeks, we have time to put something together so that they can.
You mean for the, for the.
For F P L, yeah, so that we can get that to them so they can make sure they address things. I mean, obviously there's going to be stuff that comes up that you can't plan for.
One other F P L issue, and I don't know if it's appropriate for, for greater gateway, but who's responsible for cleaning the poles, for keeping the poles maintained?
It depends on, it depends on, right now it's us.
It's us. It is us now. If you go with them, it would be them.
See, F P L offers two options. One, the option that they provide the maintenance and the energy, or two, they just provide the energy. My community is fifty fifty, half the poles, they got the maintenance and the energy, and the other half, I've got the maintenance, they've got the energy.
There's a mix in Pelican and I don't have a clear definition of which does what.
But you're looking like she said, it's about sixteen bucks, nine bucks for maintenance and seven bucks for power. And that's nine bucks per light per pole every month of the year for.
But includes electricity. You don't pay for electricity. I, that's my bill for my choice. It's three hundred and three, three, three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and thirty dollars for all the lights that I have. That includes electricity, that includes if somebody comes in and breaks them and they do everything. And a light goes out, I would put it in online and within two, three days, you know, they're here, they're, they're checking it. So for us, it worked out great. And when they did, uh, you know, they did the upgrade for the L E D, there was also a no cost, they changed all the valves.
We need all the wiring re-done and they'll do all of that.
They, all of it.
Providing the information specifically for Pelican, I guess he does for everybody, but I know what we're now spending. We never do that before. But now we know what we're spending for electricity and for streetlights.
Well, you're, you're dealing with Eric, right?
For us, uh, the L E D is a savings.
I have a different person that I'm dealing with, but Chelsea's probably dealing with Eric.
Okay.
So she, she's handling the workshop.
He seems to be one that's getting stuff.
Eric Corral, yes, Mike Corral, yeah. Chelsea said, yes, it's Eric. I have a different person with the meters that I've been dealing with.
So you want us to get something back to you to get to them ahead of time so that they come to the meeting?
Yeah, if you have specific things that you want to have addressed, it would be best that we can make sure they're really prepared.
I'd really like to have them look at Gateway Boulevard and give us their input, uh, input as how they think they're going to meet the lumens requirement on the street with those oak trees.
Well, yeah, they know that someone's going to have to come down because they're not going to give to.
Yeah, going to take some trees down.
Yeah.
And that's what they'll tell you.
We were talking about moving the poles too.
Do what?
Moving the poles to a different location so that they're not in the orcs.
We spent a whole lot of money putting LEDs in.
It's going to be a combination of things. It's going to be removing the orcs, moving the poles, it's going to be everything that you can imagine is going to happen.
And about four years ago, we spent a ton of money putting LEDs. We weren't completing it as community.
So did we.
But then we were expecting to see a, a drop in price. We, we never got it.
Well, we saw.
Neither did we, and I just got a five year rebate.
Okay, then I'm, we have some people put in touch with you.
Yep.
Because I think we missed an opportunity there. Because the following year that we put all this in, our, our electric cost went up three percent.
They went back and recalculated sixteen monthly bills and gave us about nine thousand bucks.
That's what they did for us. They told us like if you switch it.
I don't know. We ever asked. We changed, but we never got any savings.
And you had one quick.
It's right here. They're, they got moved to next meeting. It's, this needs to get updated. The date's wrong here.
Um, well, let's go to supervisor comments. Flomy, I'll start down here in.
Actually, I'll have, she wrote mine. I have Bob.
Okay, stop, stop, she just.
Pass the torch.
She just reversed back to you.
No, it's all right. Um, Tony, you sent out the, uh, I guess suggested language for sunshine wall compliance?
Yeah, I think it was sent, was that distributed? I don't know.
It was on.
Everybody got it electronically.
We got it.
That was the seven, seven, twenty-two, I believe. Is that the one?
Yeah, seven, seven. Well, there's a hard copy on here right now.
Yeah, there's a hard copy.
If there's going to be any discussion about this, and the, and the background on this is. Yeah, the background is, there was an opportunity for clarity to make sure that the various work groups are complying with sunshine. We may have been a little sloppy, uh, in that the work groups themselves don't make decisions. They make observations and they present those observations to the P P A C committees.
No, no comments, opinions or recommendations.
No, no recommendation.
Mine was under my agenda.
Yeah, we had one under.
I have.
I just want to make sure that that went through, everybody's aware of it. Well, now that we've gotten to this point and it's been tough getting here, uh, we'll make sure that the, our particular work groups comply with this.[1758.89]
Chelsea says you're hard to hear.
We're gonna make sure that the various work groups within Pelican comply with the the sunshine law.
Tony, too.
And certification, each work group chair won't be communicating with themselves, they're PPAC members, they will present separately at the PPAC committee.
That is correct.
Oh, I, I'll get my turn.
Yeah, we're getting much closer, I think we're probably by next month, we will have our landscape work.
I think it would be a great idea, maybe if it's just once a year, that we have any advisory committees or councils, we all meet at some point, and let's just go over-
Rehash.
Guidelines, what the expectations are and do's and don'ts, because we've had some changes in Stony Brook.
Yeah.
Questions there, but Pelican's been operating, you know, for a while, but, and I think we're looking to maybe introduce some committees.
Your, your problem is that work group and those subcommittees, it's very easy to cross that line.
Yes.
Real easy.
Well, at least we've articulated what are, what the requirements are.
And I do appreciate the fact that the committee members that I've dealt with are very sensitive to that. And so to the extent that anybody has criticized or raised a question about it, I'm getting inquiries as does Laura, so I really appreciate their sensitivity to that, very much so. And the community is also alert to everything. And one of, one other concept my P, Mr. Chairman, is that once a year, have a, an annual recap report for each committee. We have the reports as they go along during the course of the year, maybe just like a recap of a major items, like a refresher of what happened in the last 12 months, that could be part of the annual meeting.
Your, your annual summary of your committees and work groups.
It might be helpful. Phil Meesey told me that at the next PPAC meeting, you were supposed to be putting on a presentation for them.
I made sunshine law, this one or the next one.
Sunshine.
It may be kept to the next one, I'm not-
Okay, whatever, at least they're, they're going through it, the effort of doing it, and I don't know if Stony-
We already did sunshine, a great sunshine law presentation for the Stony Brook Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And that was, and and it was very helpful, and there was some good questions from that committee.
Okay, so you've already done it with them?
Yes.
Uh, all my other questions or comments are just gonna go to Tetra Tech at the next meeting, because I'm very interested in finding out what they're doing with the, the weird pond 38, the access road status, which we talked about. We got a lighting project at Pelican Preserve Boulevard at Cypress Grove, it's just, these things are just glacial in the way they move forward. Uh, the pavers for Casella, and again, the Plaza Road turnover, which I understand is, Tony's the problem, that will get that resolved next one. But we got a number of things that are moving forward, they just don't move forward very quickly, can be a little frustrating, that's all I've got.
Yep, and I'm not sure if Mr. Guy's still on.
I think he dropped off.
He was, he dropped off right being of supervisor comments.
Ed, and what do you got?
Uh, only thing I want to do is make sure on that meeting at the 4th, Steve Bloom and Russ Wire both gonna be here.
They need to be here.
They need to be here.
For the budget hearing?
No, no, August 4th.
Oh, yeah.
Steven, you're, you're on, are you planning, you're planning to be in attendance on the 4th, correct? He's muted, I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I can be there.
And we may also want to have Rhonda, our president, that meeting also.
Yeah, yeah.
And we will, and we'll talk, I'll talk with Laura and Chelsea about whether we want to have Sandy McLennan or Pedro Bonc, I mean, Bond Council on that also.